All right, I'd like to call this meeting order. Would everybody please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and to the end of time.
I'm Sean Woodette, good grade teacher at Five Hocks, and myself, Tim Bell. We would like to take you on a little bit of a journey of where we have been this year at Five Hocks, and we're going to do this a little bit differently than we have in the past. Normally, we've had students come up, but what we're talking about today really has to do with more of what the adults we've been doing on behalf of our students. We have three parts that we'd like to talk about. One is our status as an AYP school. The federal definition is paddock of your program, and we're not going to go with that definition. We're going to go with awesome yearly program. We like that better. We think it fits better with what we're doing. So we're going to talk a little bit about what our plan is and has been and what we're working on, and what we think our current level of achievement is. As you know, we're on the list. Our job really is to become an unidentified school. We're always talking about we want to be identified. Well, we do, but for this list, we want to be unidentified. So we've worked on that mantra all year. We're trying to get away from being those three lines, the way the federal government has it, and make it our three lines. So we want the awesome yearly program. We are on AYP at Five Hocks for our subcategory of special education, reading and math. What we had to do is we had to develop our two-year improvement program. We didn't have to do it ourselves. We had a team of, there were eight of us, I believe, that were on the team. We also had support from the Department of Education through emails, through an online chat room, through an acrobat boardroom, where we had lots of support. We also had, in my opinion, what was the most important, is that we had complete building support. We didn't do this, the eight of us, and then go out and tell everyone what we were going to do. We had buy-in from the beginning. The one thing that we had to do right in August is we had to notify our parents that they did have the opportunity to move to another school. I believe we had one taken. I think that's highly of our staff, too, that that's all that we had. All right, the plan. When we were looking at our plan, thinking, all right, we have our one subgroup, we can knock them dead, we can take those fifteen students and bring them to the sort of... The more we started with our plan, the more we found that that doesn't work. So we went to a very simple philosophy, that a rising tide resolves all boats. That if we help every student, then we are going to be making the difference that we're wanting for our subjects. And we did have to focus on reading and math. Our plan had these specific sections, one for reading, one for math, actually three, because we had to focus on what we would do for not only the students, but also the staff. It's not a short term. It wasn't a 2010-11, 2010-12 at a minimum, but we thought, why should we stop there? If we're going to be improving so that we get to be unidentified forever, we should go out in 2014, when all schools have to get 100 percent. And one of the major strong points is that we didn't dwell on one particular parent, staff, and student. We have a lot of different things. One of the things that is very effective, using a tool from the assessment company themselves, the MCA, we have concentrated on, with our fourth and fifth grade, not only at school, but also with our family, is using that vocabulary. Every student has their own unique vocabulary, really not their own. If they fit a certain goal line, they have a unique learning vocabulary. They can access that data at school, and they just be done from the day they got the opportunity. One of the things we did, 30 minutes a week, you have to do a college test, you have to do a reading contest, so these are great tools for our area. The other five, that's what happens during RCE. But what it does, it is less skill set for students, that is particular to their needs, as identified by the MCA. Another thing that we're doing, that I don't know where this idea came from, we came across it in some of our studies, is that students that come close to achieving the need standards often miss because they don't understand the test book curriculum. So we thought, okay, let's just pick a sample test apart and see where will this take us? And we found way more than we bargained for in using the vocabulary lab. What we've done is identified the vocabulary. Now, I'm not necessarily talking about one term used for another, but if you're looking at line graph, pie graph, pie graph, charts, what does all of that mean? Giving the students the opportunity to work on it, the way they're going to work on it in a task on the computer. We found that not only are we teaching them that test-taking skill, we're also giving them an academic rationale or academic experience that they haven't had. And the way the vocab lab works is there's a presentation, teacher presentation, smart board, so that they can all see the screen. Then there's individual help, and then there's an attendance time. This whole time, we're charting what we're working, as we work through it. Sean, can you talk about the summer school academy and our after-school program?
After-school program for us, we started off and managed for meetings. And a lot of the stuff that Tim has talked about already, the kind of individual need for some of these students that are able to run an active help, that was kind of the goal of the after-school academy, too. One thing to add, what you said earlier, the kind of making this, we talked a lot about community building and teamwork in our schools, and so it's really a good chance, we don't like having an AYP status, obviously, but it actually ended up being a good opportunity for our team of teachers to sit down and really look at what else can we do to meet our students' expectations that did not make it to the project. After-school academy went Tuesdays and Thursdays for about an hour and 15 minutes in each session. We had groups of somewhere around 10 to 12 students per each one. And the nice thing about the after-school academy, and we're going to be offering another one after the third grade, when our summer school will be a second one for math, the nice thing is giving those kids smaller group study, having the teacher be able to devote more time to that group of students, instead of having 26 or 27 students. You have 12, you know, basically what their needs are and are similar, and being able to really focus in on what they are needing, being able to use different data points like the math scores, your MCA score. In fifth grade, we were able to bring in our V28 program and really get those kids individualized instruction and reading, and they're doing the same thing with math. Being able to integrate some technology into a lot of things that we do. And the kids that came to after-school program, the kids that I've had in the past, you know, you're asking them to stay an extra hour beyond their regular day, but they enjoy that in small groups. They enjoy kind of knowing that they're within a group of kids that all do kind of have the same question and need the same help. Sometimes in a larger class, it's tough sometimes for them to reach out and ask some little questions and building some confidence and seeing some success in some of the things that we did is good for those students to feel good about spending that extra hour in doing some of that. So we're hoping that we're seeing the benefit of it.
We also have added kindergarten and first grade with our smart room. And yes, we believe that all of our rooms are smart, but this smart room is our stimulating maturity through accelerated readiness training. And if you haven't, it's hard to explain if you haven't seen it in action. It's fine motor, it's gross motor, it's academics in action. There are so many things that are exciting about it. Seeing a first-grade class that is in the smart room right now, that the little guy that's crawling, actually, that's kindergarten, the little guy that's crawling, he has either numbers, colors, letters, words, that as he moves his hand, he says each one. So as you get into second grade, it might be beginning multiplication facts. First grade does a lot of addition and subtraction facts as they're moving along. It puts that action with learning that fact. There actually is a climbing bar that's in the background, and at one point, depending on the grade level, there will be facts, or there will be, there might be addition facts, or there might be colors or shapes, but as the kids grab the bar, they have to say it. And so they're going across, and they're calling each other on it. They don't get it right, they'll say, you got that one wrong, and then the student has to drop, and they have to go back and get in line, so that they're working through it. It's incredible to watch. In a very brief straw poll of one first-grade classroom, would you rather go outside for an extra recess or have an extra smart room time? They chose the smart room time. So what are we doing with our RTI? I know you've heard that, our response to intervention. I have three slides here. The one on the top right is a non-RTI group. This would be a group of students that are either they've met the benchmark standards or that they're above it, and we have one boy that's reading a story that he wrote to his classmates. The middle picture is a group of pretty good students that need just a little bit of support, and they have the instructor, the parent that's with them, is more of a guide. And the one on the lower left-hand side is a group of our first graders that are working in their leveled literacy intervention, and they were working so hard that they didn't even know I was there. They're working with one adult, it's three boys, that are struggling with the same skill set, so that they're getting the instruction that they need at their level. We have, our response to intervention is focused Monday through Thursday, approximately 20 students per grade level, and they work in groups of four or less on targeted needs. Okay, so what else are we doing? Now we're getting to a little bit about what the adults are doing. We have our cross-grade level discussions. These started with being initiated by the team that put together the plan. Now they are commonplace. They're talking to each other about, okay, we're doing this now, is this what you need? Is this something that, what if we don't get to this? We have, all of our students' goals now are based on multiple measures. The MCA is the maps, AIM SWAP, the Fanta Synthel. We have, we don't triangulate anymore. We're doing it four and five and six steps, so we don't have three-legged schools anymore. We've got more. Some of our staff meetings are just designated as data meetings. Bring your data, that's what you're going to do. I've got you scheduled for 50 minutes, that's what we're going to do, and that way I can go from group to group. Or we do it in their rooms, and we just, I get to move. Our grade-level meetings are dedicated to student progress. Conferences with parents really do talk about the data now. It's not, well, I feel that, it's what the data says. What's going on in the meeting?
Yeah, just kind of adding to what Tim said, the time to talk cross-grade level is very valuable for us, and to be able, as a fifth-grade teacher, to go to fourth grade and look at data and have a conversation about a perceived trend, or a perceived differences in different areas of math, or being able to take math scores, take a look at each individual area of the math test and where students struggle the most, and being able to come up with individualized goals based on that score, and to be able to do the same thing with their previous year's MCA test, to be able to share some of that with parents, give them some things that they can be working on, looking at with their students, have been very helpful this year. We have a lot of data on our students, and it's good to be able to dive in and really use it, especially the math data, to really use it the way it needs to be used in math, to help drive our production, to help make some decisions in our classroom about what our students really need. These are just pictures of fifth graders that we have taken some of our Friday afternoon time to get them into groups, students that again have similar needs, have similar areas of weakness according to their data, and to get them into groups and allow them to work together and be able to have us coming through them to really individualize some of the things we're doing. Those have been very helpful.
So where are we? Well, seven of our nine classrooms catered to a method benchmark of 50 percentile in AIM SWAP, which is up from four out of nine last year. We've had 60-plus days of our power half hour, for over 150 hours of research-based targeted instruction. We've also, as Sean said, the after-school programming, we have another one. Our math night attendance was way up this year, and we had one less grade level. Fifth grade was at Wolfbridge at the time, we had our parent night, we still had more parents. We've seen math, our math winter growth has been seen, we've seen growth in all areas, increased use of data in multiple forms, and the discussions now start, if I can borrow a phrase from Family Feud, and the data says, that's how we start our conversations now. And I think the biggest change that we could say that we've seen at Five Hocks, and maybe across the district, is that interventions are now a first effort, they're not a last resort. That's where we start. What can we do? Look at the data and figure out where we're going to go. We don't say, I don't know what to do, and let someone else try to do it. Thank you so much for letting us come and share a little bit. We think we've made great gains. We have better staff understanding, we have our students moving forward, and our programming seems to be fitting our needs. And yes, we think we are going to become unidentified. So thank you very much. Yes, it was. Yes, it was. I'm smart enough to know when to take the survey.
Actually, I have a, you talked about, and I get the concept of all, you know, rising tide resolves all boats, but I mean, the long and the short of it is that you only failed AYP in the first grade.
Right.
And we talked about the RTI and making sure, and that, as I understand it, is being purely offered to affect and to conscious the subgroup that we struggled with.
Right.
Are we doing anything additional, whether it's, I know there are modified tests available, there are alternative tests, I should say, specifically to get off AYP, and how are we sharing them across the other elementary centers?
The, I know, I think I can speak for the other elementarys. I know that the, that our special ed group, when they get to meet on early release days and staff development days, have talked about the concept of using the learning locator with their special ed kids. And the pictures that you saw were, both groups were special education students. So the vocab lab, the learning locator, and then specifically taking the information from their MCAs, where did they fall down, and from their math scores, and building curriculum that builds them up. And not only did the general population get an invitation to come to after-school, our special ed parents got a special invitation to make sure that their students were there. So we've worked, we've worked hard to make sure that if a student is a special ed student, they can still qualify for power half-hour intervention, plus their regular intervention, plus their regular instruction. So hopefully, that some of those students are getting three different times in their language arts and their math. Well, language arts for sure, math probably just twice, because we don't have the power hour for math.
I'm thinking before you're going to teach a lesson, you want to replicate, right? So, you know, how do, what can you take from your learnings to go with?
I think the biggest one is, we're working harder right now because it's new. I think that the biggest lesson will be, you know, here's our experience, work smarter. You don't really have to work harder, you have to work smarter. And rather than, and one of the things that's really not part of our initiative at Five Hocks in particular, but district-wide, is that we're moving to writing our IEPs that are standards-based. And as they become standards-based, they will fit right into everything else that we're doing. So we're not, we're not silent with what we're doing, and I know that in grade-level meetings, they talk about the things that they're doing. I know that our special ed department talks about what they're doing, so that there's a lot of sharing that goes on.
And we've had some questions just at our, at our district grade-level workshops about what's happening at Five Hocks with AYP, and we've been able to share with other buildings just some of the things that we shared with you, which we've, all of them we've found has been beneficial for all of our students, not just for that population, but for us, to really dig into this data and look at what else we can do. And that's, I think, other grade levels have asked us, or more of those discussions that we've been having, some of us all wish, Dave, to share.
And in our RTI meetings, our district RTI meetings that current chairs, there's a lot of sharing of what's going on across the, across the district. Well, how are you getting your kids to do this? We're not getting them, so there's a lot of sharing of what's going on that way.
You said last summer you had a summer school. Were you able to track results, well, if you're talking about you getting all the data, were you able to see with the students where, I think, this full year and where to start to gain the next full year, and then what's going to happen in the future?
We, I can answer that one. For the general, for the general ed student, no. We did not, we don't have a mechanism to actually do that, except sitting down with a pencil and writing it in. But our special ed, our special ed group did do that, and they've tracked the kids. Well, the time, the time will tell now, when we get to, when we get to April, in August, when we get our results, we'll know, we'll know if, if all of our efforts. It'll be hard to, hard to single out which one thing, but we don't care. You know, we'll put them all together and say, you know what, we're going to continue to do it all.
The one thing that we do have the ability to do is track a spring-to-spring math score. So that's the one, one measure that we have. It's a little bit harder. We don't, we get the math data right away, that's one of the nice things about that test, so we can kind of look at from spring to fourth grade to spring to fifth grade, the difficulty of the school, after-school program, what kind of games we're seeing in math. That's something to do, especially when you get to fifth grade, to fifth grade throughout their entire class. That's something to do.
Thanks. Tim, one of the things that you did show was the winter map scores going up, and is that something now across the district that we're doing it three times a year? Or did you decide that you needed to do that because of where you're at?
We decided to do it because of where we are. We're also a Title I school, so all of our Title I students have to do it.
Okay.
Special ed wanted to do it, and by that time, might as well all do it.
Okay.
And it's not an extra cost, because we do, we can do it four times during the course of the year.
Right.
This is our second, second year of doing the winter.
Okay.
It's, it's not as reliable, because there isn't as big a set of students that take the winter, but it does give us a dipstick.
Okay.
You know, we're able to look at, at our students and say, we use it more of an individual basis for, for the whole thing, but especially in our winter, to make sure that we have students that, that are going up. And by one or two points doesn't count unless they were already at the top. So if we have our borderline kids that, you know, only grew by a couple of points, that's really a percentile loss, so we have to beef up what we're doing with them.
And we've found it helpful, taking the winter scores, too, to give us kind of a picture of growth that's happening within our own classrooms. We give one in September, and we give one in May, and by the time you give it in May, if you're not seeing some of the results that you hope to see, you've got them for about three more weeks, and then your year's up. So we've really liked getting that winter measurement, and we always remember that it's one measurement, and it's one day and one test, but it's still a nice piece of information for us to have, seeing growth in our, our non, to just give you one more technical thing to kind of handle. Kind of help us.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think just having the chance to be part of the AYP team, that kind of wrote our building goals and our building plan, to hear, we don't get a lot of it across-grade level time, it's something that, to sit in a room with a special ed teacher, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, and have everybody represented, and hear what's going on in all the classrooms. Being at that fifth grade level, we're, a lot of our years consumed by what's coming next in sixth grade, preparing for that transition, to hear what's being worked on, and to really dive into that data for each grade level. And for me to really look at the math data, the MCA data, and really get in, we've always had that data, and we've used this, but this year we really had the time to analyze it and to really help it shape some of the decision formation in the classrooms. That, for me, has been very, I feel like I know my students a little bit better this year, I know what they need a little bit more, and that's, that's been huge.
Sean and Tim, as a parent, my thank you at Five Hocks, as a board member, I thank you. Did we find the participation level from the 120 kids that participated? What amount were offered, and what did we learn? Did we have a percentage of participation?
I don't think anyone.
Sure.
I can speak for fifth grade, just because I know how many invitations were handed out and how many actually were in class. I had 12 fifth graders who had been handed out some invitations, and I'd say that's pretty, I would say that's probably pretty consistent. I know some of the younger grades, I know second grade, we have a high number of students participated, maybe at a higher number and of the percentage-wise, I would guess that they're all in that 75-80.
I know a little bit of the time.
The transportation is usually...
Seeing growth in our, our non, just give you one more technical, kind of, kind of.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think just having the, the chance to be part of the AYP team that kind of wrote our building goals and our building plan, to hear, we don't get a lot of it across grade level time. Something that could sit in a room with a special ed teacher, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, and have everybody represented and hear what's going on in all the classrooms. Being at that fifth grade level, we're, a lot of our years consumed by what's coming next year. Sixth grade preparing for that transition, to hear what's being worked on and to really dive into that data for each grade level. And for me to really look at the map data, the MCA data, and really get in, we've always had that data and used this, but this year we really had the time to analyze it and to really help it shape some of the decision formation in your classroom. That for me, that's very, I feel like I know my students a little bit better this year. I know what they need a little bit more, and that's, that's been huge.
Sean and Tim, as a parent, so my thank you at Five Hocks, as a board member, I thank you. Did we find the participation level from the 120 kids that participated? What, what amount were offered and what, what did we learn? Did we have a percentage of participation?
I don't think anyone.
Sure. Yeah, yes.
I can speak for fifth grades because I know how many invitations were handed out and how many actually were in class. I had 12 fifth graders who had been handed out some invitations. I'd say that's pretty, I would say that's probably pretty consistent. I know some of the younger grades, I know second grade, we have a high number of students participated. Maybe at a higher number handled it percentage-wise. I would guess that they're all, they're 75%.
I know a little bit of time.
The transportation is usually.
Always hard.
Yep. That's usually the one thing that is the hangup sometimes, is that I'm picking them up at 4:30.
But of the students that we did get to be there, we had 95% of them.
Yeah.
So that was fantastic.
A little high, let me pack my stuff.
Yes, and we set them consistently. They're going to be July 6th to August 5th, Monday through Thursday. And thanks to Leanne, why no one's behind you, she has helped to find some money where we may be able to offer some transportation. We're, we're working on that. Thank you, everyone.
Personnel items, open forum, this different? Oh, open forum. Okay, open forum. This is a point in time in our agenda where we allow 15 minutes for residents of the district to address the board on items that aren't on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? Seeing none, all right, now we move on personnel. There's a motion to approve the candidates, by Rick.
Second.
Second.
By Tom. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, simply type by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Please pass it. Todd checking by Tom. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, simply type by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. And.
Approval of job description.
Do I have a motion to approve the job description? So moved. By Rick. Second. By Lee. Any questions? I actually have, I actually have one question. I saw we have the, we have the summer construction coordinator and the aquatics coordinator. Can you help me look at the difference other than the seasonality of the role? Because I looked and the requirement seems very similar. Hi.
Hi. You like my home? In the past, the district had a director of pool, was Arch before.
Yeah.
And that was covered through the general fund. Then a few years back, community ed was asked to take over that role. So then that job description's changed to aquatics coordinator. And I think Matt can help me out. When did you design that? In '08, two years ago. And then Arch retired as our summer pool director, just this last summer. So we've redrafted the position to match what our needs are now, and changed the title as well.
I guess my question is, is it really two separate positions, or is it really one position depending on the season?
And that is a good question. Our HR director asked me that, and I explained to him that we out, we need a year-long pool aquatics coordinator position, but we don't know if we'll always have summer swim. So to put the two positions together would be a disservice, because the summer swim program is based on enrollment and fees and being self-supported. So we would want the option to not, not have that together. We'd have to possibly have to cut a position.
So in theory, it should be the same person.
Sure. Right. Right.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries six zero. We have no full business on the calendar, so the first item of new business is building committee recommendation and access to the Fire Lake High School property. And it looks like you're getting ready to present.
So that I can control the PowerPoint that's coming up. Okay. Building committee recommendation, road access proposal. This is a first reading tonight and does not require any approval at this point, but is just here for your information. Background. First of all, I'm making this presentation, but I'll be leaning on the support of Paul Appertowski, the professor of world architect, and Barry Scott. I have questions for you, so if you can make your way. I'll start by giving just a little bit of background. When the land for Prior Lake High School was replanted for development, our district dedicated a small piece of land to the city of Savage for a right-of-way access near County Road 27. And that was part of the original agreement when we bought that piece of property. And using their land, the city of Savage has now plans for road connection to the southwest of Prior Lake High School for future development. And the reason why there, this is up to us now, we've actually been looking at this for many years, long before I came here, three years ago. But during my entire three years, we've been talking about SS9 and waiting until we knew when Scott County was going to redo Highway 27 and make that four lanes all the way through, and then change it from east-west to north-south, and put a stoplight in at 44. That has all now been planned and actually is being let out for bids on April 11. So because the county has expansions that will begin this summer, this is brought back to us now and put on the front burner. We have been working on plans over the course of the last three years that I've been here about which, what do we do? We know that, and I can show you pictures and Paul's going to go through that, but what is our, what are decisions that we need to be made? When we look at the Prior Lake High School, the whole property is 132 acres. 7.6 of those acres is designated as SS9. 20 acres is wooden land outside of SS9. And 25 acres is a park, which is a one-man school. If SS9 is doing 34th, the fire like 20 school people would be designated as a national area. And that's where we began our conversation. Our building committee has been working with the city of Savage Empire Lake Aggregates for the last three months here. And the building committee objectives is state consistent. We want to make sure that we have student safety as our number one objective, and cost avoidance is number two. So those have been the filters we've run all proposals through. We've had several, many different conditions of what we can do instead of what the city has a right-of-way already planned. So Paul's going to share with you what those, what those two proposals are.
Sure. The first one that we're calling proposal one really represents, I guess, the fruition of the planning that started back in 1999, 2000, when the high school was being designed. Long before you purchased the seven plus parcels of land to make the high school, the city had already identified a need to connect 154th with the future aggregate site. And I, we found diagrams back from that time, again, before you, before you bought the land, showing bad desire by the city. So when you, when you came before the city to replat the land and went through the planning commission, they put into the plan basically the request for that right-of-way. And the gray line that you see on this plan is the right-of-way that was arrived at for that. And that was done through compromise. You can see that it makes some bends to go around fields to allow you to develop more land there, and tried to maximize the preservation of that tree area there. In working that out, there's clearly a lot of grades that happen down in that part of the site. And so it's necessary to do that, to put in some significant retaining walls. And part of what the city is proposing, should they develop this option, is to put sheet piling in and create retaining walls on the east side of the tree area, the west side of that road. And the estimate is that the tallest part of that will be about 23 or 25 feet tall. It's in total, I think, about 800 feet long, but most of it is not that height. That's the highest spot to average, about 12 feet. And then that'll be covered in some retaining wall picture. In addition, the city has identified, the city and county, I guess, together, have identified the need for another connection into the aggregate site down there. And that, we won't go through the whole story of that, but that's part of the evolution of the county changing their road design. And that's signified on this plan by that red arrow down there, that there'll be another road. And I think it's being called South Bend Road. It's not official yet, but we're referring to it as that. And that'll, that'll be the, the connection of this road that's flooded through the school. This plan attempts to minimize the loss of the trees down on SS9, but it still does have some impact on them. There's some clipping of the trees that we need to happen for the retaining wall and for the, the grading around the road. There's another plan that the building committee has been working on, and this is the evolution of several other plans that we've talked about over the years. This one proposes a realignment of that road that's platted on your land. And again, for clarity, when you platted the high school site, you gave that land to the city for that road. They, they own the land under that other road alignment. And so that plan will be, you know, what they have the right to do now. This is a proposal to renegotiate that, to do it differently. So the black arrow there represents a new road alignment that would go along the north side of the soccer field, just south of the lake. This one obviously does require the regrading of the area under SS9. It still has that southern road alignment in it, that South Bend Road, which again, the city and the county have identified as a need. So that one seems like it's going to happen regardless of development. This does offer the possibility of adding a few fields down there. And for clarity, I think those fields are not for school use as much. They're certainly not for school day use. Even at the design of the time of the high school, those fields on the south are really extracurricular fields. They don't do that today. This plan has some advantages, for this to be true, obviously, with the cost avoidance for this. And that's due in large part because Prior Lake Aggregates has re paved some of the cost of developing it, the cost of making that road alignment on the north, as well as adding the parking, and they would take care of developing those fields down there. And that will happen over time as they develop the right-of-ways, as they continue to develop the roads. I think that covers the proposals from both.
I have to get to PAFS Technology 2011. And really what's driving this whole project is Prior Lake Aggregates' desire to complete the engine plan for the gravel. And what you see here is what's called an AUAR. That's an alternative area urban review, which looks at the, basically it's an EAW. We all know what an EAW is, environmental assessment. Whenever you have a project of this size, it pushes you to a level of environmental review. And in this case, it was based on the number of units that are to be built. But rather than doing EAW, Prior Lake Aggregates did an AUAR, which is actually much more comprehensive than an EAW. Other than PIS, environmental impact statement, but not quite the best of the two. And so this shows you what their plan is going to look like as it develops. So what they're doing is they're going to be developing from the east side to the west. And so right now, this area over here by SS9 is what's critical. I mean, they want an answer. They're the ones driving the issues. Like, we want an answer on whether or not Prior Lake School District, Prior Lake Savage School District, wants to work with them and partner on coming up with another approach. Because as was stated earlier, the city of Savage already has the right-of-way to make the road alignment work. And I need to back up a little bit, just for historical purposes, for those of you that were around, and some of you were. When the high school was built, the main reason, one of the main reasons why a signalized intersection was allowed at 154th Street was because we had always planned on a connection, a frontage road connection, connecting the school main entrance to this property over to the west. So we've got the right-of-way right now. Is that the best alignment? I guess that's the issue really before the school district. And the school owns the property. The school district would be the one actually submitting an application to the city to revise their plant, their plat. And as a part of that, of course, you'd be vacating existing right-of-way, plating new right-of-way. And of course, these discussions that have been going on for the last three years are related to who's going to pay for it all. And really, Prior Lake Aggregates is, has an opportunity to do the grading of SS9 as a part of their gravel pit. So that's the benefit for them, and really a benefit for the school district and the city too, should we pursue an alternative roadway alignment. Now, what's also driving it for the city, to get to your main question, Dr. Grover, is the fact that the city is extending our trunk water and sewer. And with County Road 27 construction starting this year, our trunk water and sewer line ends facing at 154th Street, County Road 27. So we have to extend down 27 when that's reconstructed to four lane. Remember, 27 is going straight now, rather than this curve. So the plan that was done by Prior Lake Aggregates, you can see, under the old plan, they had, right at that intersection right here, was kind of a nice front door into their commercial area with a signalized intersection. That's changed now. 44 is going to go straight, County Road 27 is going to go straight north and south. So that presents a major change for them, and they're going to have to, you know, redo their commercial area of their plan. But the main point for us is that we need to get an alignment to get our trunk water and sewer down there and tie that in with the road construction project, because obviously we can have economies of scale by only having to dig up the road once, and that's very important to us. And so that's why the timing is kind of like, we need a solution, and Prior Lake needs a solution as well, so that they can just move forward one way or another. And I, I think it's important, Prior Lake Aggregates isn't here, but one of the things that they've said consistently throughout this process, and I know many of you are on the building committee over the years, is like, we don't care. We just want an answer. If, if you want to leave it with a retaining wall on both sides, that was one of the options that we, they, we have, and do it on our existing right-of-way, fine. If you don't want to do it a different way, great, we'll work with you. So it's not like Prior Lake Aggregates is saying, you have to do this. And, but the city is saying, we need a frontage road connection. And again, does it go on the existing alignment, or does it go on an alternative alignment? That's what we're here talking about. What makes the most sense? And there's pros and cons, obviously, to both alternatives.
Okay. Any questions for our presenters? Lee?
I'll start. I'll get some that might come up later. So you, you
So you kind of answered the question as to why two roads. That's the question that I get. Why do we have to have two roads into this development that's not happening for a long time? And I am under the impression that part of the reason why we got the traffic lights at the intersection of the high school is because of what you mentioned, that there had to be a frontage road, but also that the county agreed to it because we agreed that we would make that a four-way intersection. And right now, even though it isn't a four-way intersection, it's more or less our driveway, even though officially it's not. I get that. But do we need to do two roads right away, or would SS9 come down if we chose that one, that proposal, and the road wouldn't go in for a while? Is that, I've heard that, too. Is that the case?
Can I go backwards? Okay. You're looking at your overhead now, I believe. Does that show up there, too? Oh, perfect. Okay, so as far as two roads, are you referring to the South Bend Road, let's call it, at the bottom of that map, and then kind of on our existing alignment, or this other alternative? The reason why we need two roads is because the intersection on South Bend Road, as it gets to County Road 27, that's going to be only a three-quarter intersection, meaning a right in, a right out, and a left in. So people that want to go north out of the Prior Lake Aggregate site in the future would have to go all the way down over on County Road 44 to go north. They can't get, you know, because, that's why we need two roads.
But isn't there another road as well, farther down on 44, going closer toward the Prior Lake border?
Another road.
Coming out of the development.
Coming out of the development, and that's...
Yeah, it'll go right onto County Road 44.
And that's a four-way intersection. Is that correct?
Forty-four down the road will be a roundabout. So yes, you could come out of there on a roundabout, then if you're heading north, you'd go east on County Road 44 to the new signal that's going to be on 27, and then go north. Yes, that is an option.
Okay.
That's rather circuitous, but, and that's why the city has always said, we want a more direct north-south frontage road connection. And the other reason why, excuse me, is that we have to remember that the traffic volumes on County Road 27 are projected to double between now and 23rd. So by bringing them your alignment, we bring them onto another traffic roadway. Ultimately, they're going to get there, but this way they go on more of a local street connection to the school driveway, let's just call it that, to get onto County Road 27 to go north.
Okay, and Prior Lake Aggregate will help pay for this project if they, if they can use the gravel or the fill in SS9? Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Right.
But they won't pay the other way? They don't have, there's no obligation for them to do that?
That's correct. Because the only real advantage for them is to get the gravel, to help them with their end use plan. That's one benefit. The other benefit is that they won't have to incur the cost of building a retaining wall on their side if SS9 stays as it is today. So there's two big benefits to Prior Lake Aggregates.
For clarity, I think they're estimating that only about a third of the hill is gravel, 20%, something like that is gravel. Most of it is topsoil that they'll use to restore their site, or end your site as well. And that's all based on estimates, based on what they know about adjacent land. No one's done any exploration of the hill itself.
And might I add that if the, if we go, if we go with the right of way north-south, on the west side, on the Prior Lake Aggregate side, the height of the walls would be quite high. At one point, at the very corner of that lot, I think we heard about 80 feet.
Right, right. And they, they obviously have different ways that they can terrace that, but the total height difference that they have to deal with is about 80 feet. And they believe at the corner, which, I don't know if I can point on this, but at the corner of the green area there, just southwest of the lake, they do believe they're going to have to have a sheer wall that's the full height, and then they'll have some opportunity to terrace it elsewhere. But even those terraces will be, you know, 20 feet, 25 feet apiece. So it'll be a big wall.
Barry, there's some wooded area listed as city parks. We've talked about the wooded area remaining on the school site. How much of that other green area would be considered wooded and contiguous to our property as well?
Well, the area immediately north of SS9 is SS10. Okay, or surrounded by that big wetland. That's SS10. That'll all be stay as it is.
And that's on our property.
That's on your property. Of course, you know, you've got the one private residence in there. Odds of them developing, though, are obviously pretty slim. Then as you go to the west of the large wetland area, SS10 is SS8, which is also a city park right now. And then as you go north of that, see that wetland towards the top by those north soccer fields? That area that's up there in green is SS7. So SS7, 8, and 10 would basically be preserved under all of the plans.
But that's more than the 20 acres we talked about, right? Doesn't that get us closer to about 25 or 30 in total?
Well, the total acreage...
If you put the city park into it, it would be more, in addition to what Sue Ann presented earlier.
I can tell you was four.
Yes.
Say, Barry, regardless of which option is selected, the ultimate roads will be City of Savage roadways with fewer responsibility for maintenance and everything?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'd plow them, maintain them.
I have a few questions, so I'll ask the board forgiveness early as I go through some of these. Help me, Barry, if you would, on the difference between, who owns the property underneath the platted road?
The City of Savage owns the property under the platted road.
Is that supposed to be designated on the plat?
It is designated on the plat.
As a right of way?
That's correct.
Because when I reviewed it, I couldn't see the words "right of way" anywhere, or "dedicated," or any word like that.
Well, normally on a plat, it just shows the 60, in this case, I think it's 80-foot of roadway.
It shows GPS coordinates.
And you're probably not looking at the real plat.
Because this is the plat I got from the City of Savage.
I know that from the map side, seeing it's identified as platted city right of way.
Maybe after the meeting offline, you could get me that? Or we could give me the contact.
You may be looking at an earlier rendering that wasn't the official recorded plat, because we usually have a preliminary plat and a final plat, so I don't know what you saw exactly, but I can get you the plat.
And I think that the county and the city both have simplified versions of the plat. The actual plat is a series of, I think, five or six mylar sheets that are filed with the county. Those are the ones that have the legal descriptions on it.
It's a pretty big site.
And in some of my discussions with former planning commissioners, normally on a platted road, is there, there's an escrow account set up to pay for that development? Is there an escrow account set up for this one?
No, there was no escrow account set up that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming the development?
Can I back up on that one?
Okay, go ahead.
There is no, usually that's when we get an escrow, when the developer builds the road.
The developer puts money in?
The developer puts money in an escrow account to ensure that the road's going to get built, because they agreed to it. Like Trace Waters, just down the road.
Yep.
We got an escrow on that. Now, on this one, there was no timing on when the road was going to actually get built. And we always envisioned that the city would build it as a 429 improvement project, because the school owns the property on both sides, and there's really no one to assess, other than the school district.
And in the development agreement, it talks about woodland will remain undisturbed?
Yep.
Would that require a redoing of the development agreement, then?
Yes.
And then, it also mentions a forest management plan in the development agreement? You comment on that, please?
Yes, the school was required as a part of the, I think it was a condition of platter approval of the developers' agreement, I can't remember which one, that they were going to do a forest management plan that would identify methods for you to go in and take out invasive species, and that was never done.
Okay. And that plan should have been the district's responsibility?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, we have done, we have done mitigation for oakwills. We have been managing that forest.
That's correct. A formal management plan, forest management plan, was never done, but the school district has done. I even, I think you've even done some buckthorn removal over the years.
And migratory plowing has also happened?
Around the oakwill trees.
If I can ask for more time? From the article in the paper about the development of County Road 44, it mentioned that PLA, Prior Lake Aggregate, will mine the gravel underneath the road, and that'll, so the road actually will not be done until 2013? Is that correct?
That's correct. I can go through the construction scheduling, if you like.
No. So is the final design then done, or is PLA still?
The final design for County Road 44 and 27 is done. It's been done for a number of years, it's just been put on hold.
On the presentation to city council, they didn't know if the, you call it South Bend Road, I think they referred to it as 157.
That's correct.
They didn't know whether that was, that was going to be a right in, right out, only I thought, during that presentation to the council.
Well, it goes through phases. As the traffic counts on County Road 27 increase, it goes from, actually, in the beginning, potentially a full intersection, meaning you'd be able to go right in, right out, and north. But as the traffic counts get higher, then it would go to a three-quarter. And then when traffic counts around 20, 30, get to be double what they are, then it would be just a right in, right out only. So it's kind of a phased intersection at South Bend Road.
I, I think they referred to it as 157 south.
You go by our numbering, that's what it would be.
I know from the meeting minutes, they referred to PLA lawyer said they're ready to go forward at some point, but no date was given. I wish he was here to comment on that a little bit, but can you comment on what he means by the word, or the phrase "some point"?
All I can tell you is from the meetings I've been involved in, that they can't do anything until the trunk water and sewer gets there. So it's kind of the chicken and egg. It's really a double chicken and egg in this case. It's the completion of 44 and 27, which will not be done until 2013. Nothing will happen before that. And we won't get our water and sewer extended. If we do it this year, it still wouldn't be ready to access until 2012. So they've indicated to us that once they get an answer on whether or not SS9 is going to stay or go, then they will start to work on their first phase of their reclamation plan, which would be the east end of the site, their site. I think realistically, given the current market conditions, they, they want to have all the approvals in place so that when the County Road 44 is done in 2013, they can begin to market their lots.
From the meeting minutes from the building committee, it mentioned that the, the city would build that 157th with itself of the soccer fields first? Correct?
We haven't said when we're going to build that for sure. We don't know when, obviously, we wouldn't build it until we see some development on the Prior Lake Aggregate site. But let's say they were to go forward with, you know, the first phase, we're not even sure. If we go with that alternative alignment on the north, even the, the timing of that road construction on the north, in terms of when it would be ready for cars, hasn't really been finalized. We've talked about what Prior Lake Aggregate has said, is that they would grade that and put crush rock down, so that you could at least use it to get to the future fields, and also to give you additional parking in that area. So the actual final roadway, no one said when that is going to be done on either the north road or the south road.
But the south road, sorry.
Go ahead.
The south road is necessary, because that's where you're bringing in your trunk water and sewer, and so that's all going to, that, that road construction will be timed with your decision to extend the service down there.
That's correct. So just because we put the water and sewer in doesn't mean we're going to build the road yet.
To clarify some of this timing, it's a little unsure when the work's going to happen. And even if it were to start this next season, it's going to take a few years to come to fruition. The reason you're talking about it now is because the district still has options right now. And very soon, those options will be reduced back to the fallback plan. So that's really what the timing right now is about.
Because in the, in the meeting minutes from the building committee, it said the city would propose to monitor the traffic on that south road, and then determine traffic levels. And then, at that point, then determine future needs.
Well, with that really was intended, I wasn't at that meeting, but what was intended is that we're going to monitor traffic on 27, and from the future development, to determine when we're going to build the south road. Because if they just go with the first phase of the development on a gravel pit, and we don't know the exact phasing, because we haven't seen a preliminary development plan yet, if it's just houses over there, and they only build, say, 20 homes, we're not going to construct South Bend Road. It just doesn't, you know, it's not feasible to build it with that few vehicles. But now, if they go with the commercial and decide, oh, we're going to go with the commercial first, and they have some users, well, then it might be in the city's best interest to build that South Bend Road sooner than later. Well, we'll have the utilities in. I mean, we're going to be putting the trunk utilities in this coming, not this year, but this, late this year, early next year.
On that, if I ask forgiveness for some more questions, on that South Bend Road, you see there that's going through our property, you mentioned, during one of the meeting minutes that you weren't there, you mentioned a construction cost of $2 million, which is a little different than what you have here, not including land. What is that "not including land"? Where is that land located?
The $2 million was not for South Bend Road.
You're changing the names, yeah?
Well, okay, the road that runs through our property.
That was through...
The north-south.
The north-south road, okay.
The north-south road was $2 million. And we already have the right of way. There's two roads. The north-south road, that was $2 million, and I think the South Bend Road was around $450,000 or something like that. We still need to acquire some right of way, because we were going to straddle that South Bend Road, half on the school side and half on the private property on the other side. So we'd have to acquire right of way from them.
Help me, point, I guess I'm really confused on the terms. Point to me what you refer to as South Bend Road.
Okay, I can't point.
We can't point. It's the red arrow.
It's the red arrow.
The red arrow.
Yep, that's South Bend Road.
If I could just, I think it's confusing, because on one of the charts, the South Bend Road was the north-south road, and the red one is the 157th.
And on the plan I have...
Let's start referring to South Bend Road as 157th to make it all clear.
That's the red one.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's easier for me, yeah. Okay.
Say, Barry, one of the, one of your city councilmen at the building committee had asked about using South Bend Road as a, as a four-way stop, putting a stoplight there, and there was quite a bit of discussion. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, the, at 157. There was discussion that if we could get a signalized intersection there, then we wouldn't need to build the north-south road, or the alternative alignment along the north. But the county spacing requirements for signalized intersections do not allow another signal between 154th Streets and the County Road 44 connection. They won't do it. The county will not approve it.
I think the discussion was they wouldn't approve it because, in part, we have that planted roadway already.
That's correct. That's another very good point. They would definitely bring that up. But the key thing is their spacing. On a major collector like that, they would, I think their spacing is a half a mile, or at least a quarter mile, if not a half mile.
So the cost there of the north-south road, in the pink, I believe, no, the north-south road through our property, you have listed there a cost of 1.9 million roughly?
That's correct.
That's not all charged to the school district, is it?
No.
Okay. How is our cost then determined?
At previous meetings... At previous meetings, the building committee members were pushing me on that one for an answer. Normally, what we have to do, we have to do a benefit appraisal to determine what amount we can assess. Whenever we do an assessment, we have to do a benefit appraisal. And on this type of project, there obviously isn't as much benefit on this type of project as there would be on a single-family residential project. I, I just threw out a number that I thought it would be around 15%, but please don't hold me to that because I have no idea. It's just a guess.
And that benefit's based on the increase in value of our property?
That's right.
Okay. So it's hard to imagine that we would see an increase in the value of our property by putting our road right down the middle.
I would suspect that you would say it's hard to imagine. And it usually is on any benefit appraisal.
Well, I understand when you put, when you put, you know, sewer and water into a property, I can understand that because of the resale value.
Well, again, appraisers, what they look at, they look at all different kinds of factors. And one of the things that has been included is just the safety factor. There'd be additional parking. If, remember, we talked about, if we were to build that road on the north-south alignment, we'd try to get at least parallel parking on each side, which would give you additional parking stalls for users that use those fields, which are your fields, which I have rep many, many, many soccer games on, so I know they're used by the school district.
But they're not used during the school day?
That may be the point. That's true. That's what somebody said earlier. They're not used for, I guess, your curriculum?
Okay. So that cost then of 1.9 is, that's your cost, right, I guess? So it's?
It's ours and whatever we can assess to you.
And then on like proposal two then, when you mention a $418,000 cost, how is that cost determined or assessed to us?
Same thing. We would do a benefit appraisal. And if there, you know, there's, there's some elements in option-two roadway connection that, again, we haven't really talked about in detail because one of the, the site plan right here, as a matter of fact, includes a parking lot, a very large parking lot. And we haven't talked about, well, would we do that parking lot as part of the road improvement project? And would we do a cost share on that? Would we just include that, roll that into assessments? How would we do that? We would, at a minimum, try to assess you like we would do on any project. We would do a benefit appraisal and see if there's some amount that we can assess to the abutting property owner.
I think one thing that Barry may not have visibility on is that Prior Lake Aggregates has basically agreed to fund that northern road out of their project. That would be part of the deal between the district and PLA.
They would pick up the total, they've said, total cost?
Until the city comes through with the road.
Well, if they want to pick up our share too, that would be fantastic. I think those are the agreements that is kind of down the road, have yet to be finalized.
I shouldn't speak about the city's portion of it, but they've agreed that the school district wouldn't have any financial burden for that.
And then the 25-foot, 60-foot retaining walls, can you show me? Well, I guess, I'm confused. The 80-foot would be on Prior Lake Aggregate's side?
Is it possible to draw on this thing?
Is it behind you? Behind the board?
It's, it's, it's plugged, I think it's, yeah, there you go.
Yep, go ahead and draw. You went along right 157.
So there's really, in this proposal, two, maybe a little bit more retaining walls proposed. The city would propose building retaining walls along here. And that's the sheet piling one that we talked about. That's part of that 1.9 million dollars cost. And then the aggregates has to build, and I'm not exactly sure where it starts over here, but they have to build retaining walls along there and there to make their grades work. And I don't think the design's been done for 157th, but there'd be some down here, probably, and as well as here, to support that road as it goes down into a lowland area there. So those aren't all the tall ones. The tall ones are in this area and that area. And then this area in here is the tallest part of that interior one.
And that's the 25-foot one, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. For frame of reference, for that height, how does that relate? Maybe a leading question. How does that height relate to, say, inside the high school, third floor to the cafeteria floor?
The ceiling of the high school, if I remember correctly, is about 46 feet from the floor to the ceiling. The gym is only 27 feet.
We talked about it in reference to the retaining walls on County Road 16. How tall were those?
Those are about the approximate size. If you go down County Road 16 on McCall Drive to downtown.
Denman's curve?
Yeah.
And those are how high?
Those are about 30 feet.
With that road, if we went with, under proposal two, that northern road, does that road then, would that continue into what you're referring to as the city park?
Actually, this would curve into the development right here, would make it.
Yeah, probably go, they would take it down like that, is what the last drawing we saw from them.
Okay, so there would not be a road into the city park, would there be one in the future?
No.
Okay.
That is not an active park.
Oh, okay. So if we went with the other one, we wouldn't later be talking about putting a road in off of that one?
In fact, Prior Lake Aggregates, remember, part of the whole proposal is the tree replacement. We've talked about having some tree replacement over in this area, along this edge. Some of it on their site. We've also talked, again, these are details that are still to be worked out. Some of it given in cash so that the city could plant trees elsewhere in the community. But we wanted to create a corridor connection from here into the Prior Lake Aggregate site where they had that big storm drainage pond in the middle that was on that A U I R plan.
We also talked about if, with proposal two, that along that line, the dotted line, that there would be tree replacements in there and, and a connection to the parkland that's already going to be staying intact and moving that down. So there would be a continuum from the parkland down, marking the boundary.
I know we don't have any authorities on the condition of the forest, but what, is it dying? Is, is, are we saving something trying? If we choose the other proposal one, are we saving something that's going to die in the next few years anyway? Or is not even usable with all the buckthorn and poison ivy?
Well, I do have, if you remember from the SS9 report, I think I want to, since I'm talking about that South Savage Natural Resource Inventory, it's important to correct a few misstatements that I've seen in the paper on that too, is that that did not include all of Savage. The natural resources inventory only included South Savage, a portion of the bluff line, and the Credit River corridor. So it only included 35% of the acreage in the city. So, in fact, it did not even include Murphy Hanahan Park. So I think that's important to make, make clear. This is not the last remaining exceptional wooded area in the city. But back to your question, now I forgot what your question was. I'm sorry, got off track. Oh, the condition of the forest. So in our natural resource inventory, it's, it has a statement about what it is in terms of the ecosystem and the trees and the sub-canopy and all kinds of ecological jargon that I could read to you. But it's interesting because Prior Lake Aggregates had their own natural resources person look at it. And he said some of the same things, but what he said, in, in a more recent study, I think that was done in 2007 or 2008, it said that the, the forest is going through a, a change. It's going from a Mezak oak forest to a different type of forest because the sub-canopy, the other trees down, the smaller ones, they're not growing. And a lot of the oak trees, some of them are 100, over 100 years old. But he said, he says that some of those trees are getting to the end of their life, although there are some oak trees that can live to be 250 years, as we all know. But based on his analysis of it, it's kind of in a, it's in a change. So, you know, it's hard to say. It's not an exact science. Is it true that through some additional mitigation, it would enhance the forest? True. As you all know though too, that there's oakwills. And back in 2000, when we did our inventory, there was no oakwill. And I think you can speak to the removal that you've had of trees in the last three, three to five years.
I know we've removed 25 trees, oak trees, and hoping to mitigate the oakwells. And it's still happening, plus the buckthorn and the significant poison ivy during the summer months.
One more question. With 157th down at the bottom being a three-quarter, would the city be opposed to having that South Bend Road through our property be a one-lane traveling north? Because the only need for traffic out of Prior Lake Aggregate would be to the north because they'd have access from all other directions.
That would be fairly inconsistent with anything we've ever done.
A single-lane parkway kind of thing?
A one-way going north.
Yes.
Something you could ask. I, I can't, I'd be surprised the city would go for it.
North is, north is the one direction the three-way intersection wouldn't go.
Right. So I understand the logic behind the question. I'm not sure the city would, would do it, but be something that you could certainly ask.
And one more, what if this board decides, we don't like either of the proposals, we're just going to leave it sit?
Yep.
We value the ecological and how the campus looks?
Then Prior Lake Aggregates would go forward with a plan to build a retaining wall or add on to a long slope on their property, whatever they might do. And down the road, when the city determined that there's a need for that north-south roadway, it would be built.
As planned.
As planned.
Have any other questions? Can I give you a call? And, and get, and get that official final plan?
I think the other thing the building committee, that I want to share is the building committee's been looking at traffic volume. And if you look at the, if you look at the current north-south alignment, brings our road more into the commercial area, making it more of a, of a, an easy out, so to speak, from that area and more traffic. Where if we use the northern alignment, it brings it more into a residential area, which is really the way we've always envisioned this road being, is used by the residential so that we don't have a lot of congestion at the time when we've got buses and students entering the property as well. Yes?
Chairman Pratt, one other comment on the, on the north one-way idea. As I just sat down, it dawned on me, that would be completely contrary to why we want the road. I mean, it's to be a reliever for County Road 27, to keep local traffic off of County Road 27. Whether it's going north or south, we want to keep traffic off of 27, just like we want to treat, keep as much traffic off of County Road 42 if we can. Because it's safer to go on a local street than it is on a major collector.
And I might add that when we were discussing this over the last couple of years, we've always had the, the premise that the stoplight was going to be at the, or the entrance to the development was going to be at 2744. When the county changed that to a stoplight rather than a roundabout, it changed all the plans for Prior Lake Aggregates, making the roundabout further down on 44, which is to our benefit. Because originally, we were concerned that if the development entrance was at that intersection, that people would come into the commercial area to purchase something and then take a shortcut out through the high school entrance or to our driveway at 154. So when, to the disadvantage of Prior Lake Aggregates, but to the advantage of the school district, the safety feature of this current option-two is much greater because, as Eric said, it's going to be coming into a residential area rather than coming through, making it a shortcut to a commercial.
One more comment if I could, Eric? Oh, that, okay, I've used up my allotment. Has any, who does the traffic study then if this proposal two comes through? I'm concerned how it would connect and the volume of traffic as, as it connects to the entrance to our high school, especially during beginning and end of school.
My guess is that if you went to the city with a proposal to do that development, they would ask you to fund a, a traffic study. And historically, you've used an outside consultant to do that and provide the results to the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Barry. Again, we have an open hearing on March 7th, a week from tonight, at 7 o'clock right here at the District Service Center.
Okay. And board, feel free to contact administration, members of the building committee with any additional questions or follow-up. Moving on, we have Mr. Nettie and the, and Ms. Hester with a trip request.
Well, I hope this is just as long as the last presentation. I'm sorry. I have a lot of questions. To be fair, I doubt, we've gone to the Rotary Clubs, Mall of the United Nations for many years. This will be my fourth year. I have a small little PowerPoint here that indicates what we did during last year's trip to Winnipeg. We've, we've never come before the board to request a major magnitude field trip before, so this is new to me and I'm not sure what, what the procedure is. Should I go through it and explain it, or do you have questions up front? I have a faintest idea how this proceeds.
Give us a brief summary.
Brief summary. Brief summary is the Rotary Club sponsors a trip up to Winnipeg every year. It's a Mall of the United Nations of approximately 100 students from Canada, Minnesota, Wisconsin. There's a group that actually flies up from one of the Carolinas, which I don't remember which one. We meet at a small university in Winnipeg. In advance, we've already started the planning for this year. Groups of two students, teams of two students are assigned a country. And the country is then given a speaking role on a resolution. The real resolution before the real United Nations is adapted for our purposes. There are always four resolutions. The four resolutions are already decided. And the kids do research in advance. They research what their country would, what, what position their country would take. And then they get together up in this, at this small university and begin the process of hammering out decisions. They use all their skills. They use research skills, they use their public speaking skills, their negotiation skills. They meet kids from all over the upper Midwest and, and southern and western Canada and learn to negotiate in some pretty tough spots. So obviously, it's all pretend, so to speak, but it's, in the three years that I've gone, it's been a, one of the best things that we do. Short enough?
Well, I know you've come with a report in the past, so I'm, I think we're somewhat familiar with the,
Sure.
with the whole program. And it is pretty exciting.
It's pretty cool.
For the kids that have gone, they have, they have a good experience.
Yep.
I would be in support of it.
Any, well, first of all, I'll take the motion to approve the major magnitude trip. By Lee, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any questions or discussion? Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
We were expecting six students.
Yep.
Two, one, two chaperones?
Two, two teacher chaperones, myself and Erin Hester, along with the Rotarian. That's yet to be determined. The man who went along last year was Paul Hofslain. And I think he had a conflict with the dates for this year's Mall UN. So I'm not certain if it's going to be him. It might be Allison Guntherick.
And all the costs are picked up either through donations or by the students?
No, none of the cost goes to the students. The entire cost is fronted by the Rotary Club. Upfront costs without any transportation or meals or anything is more than $2,000 for the six of us, for the six of them and the three adults. The only cost to the school district would be for substitute teachers for the two days that Ms. Hester and I would be gone.
And I know as a member of the Prior Lake Rotary, that this is a highly valued experience for students and for the, the Rotarians that go along. So thank you to you and Erin for being willing to take our students.
Do they ever make a better decision in the real UN?
Well, interestingly enough, last year, our, we had Pakistan, Russia, and... Well, interestingly enough, last year, we had Pakistan, Russia, and it's now escaping me what the third country was. And, oh, Venezuela. And that was very interesting to have students presenting as if they were from Venezuela. And so we use the four pre-prepared resolutions that they create for us. And then they always offer the kids the opportunity to come up with their own resolutions. So one of our nations, I forget now which one, proposed expelling Sudan from the United Nations, which was rather provocative, but that was, it's also not unprecedented in the history of the United Nations. Needless to say, that failed, but we tried. But then, interestingly enough, our delegation from Venezuela tried to expel the United States from the United Nations while still making them pay for everything, which was even better. That also failed, but it was made for some interesting debates. I'm not sure if those are better or worse than what the real UN would do, but it was certainly interesting.
Questions should have been different, but they were at least entertaining.
Yeah, right.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
We're done. It was fast.
Next on the agenda is summer band budget.
Good evening. I'm here to present two budgets. The first one is the beginner and intermediate summer band budget, page 23 and 24 in your packets. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look over the program proposal. It's very similar to last year. I am, after looking at the budget, requesting a fee increase. Last year, it was $70 for the 10-session of beginner band, the group lessons. And this year, we're proposing an increase. It's about $1.66 per lesson. So instead of $70, we're looking at $80. And then for the fee for the intermediates, we're looking at $110 instead of $100, which is up approximately $2 per lesson. Other than that, pretty much, it's similar to the past. Do you have any questions or comments?
Let me take a motion to approve the summer band budget as presented.
So moved.
By Rich. Second.
Second.
By Tom.
Okay.
Any questions or discussion? It looks like you break even exactly.
It's an in and an out.
All right. Seeing no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries 6-0. And we have the summer aquatics budget.
Okay. In your packets on page 25 and 26, or on your computers, I should say. The instructional swim program, we're looking at, a difference in the sessions is that we're going to try something different. Instead of offering it during the 4th of July week and then coming up with less enrollment, we're taking that week off and then extending it later in August. Sometimes in our community, there are people that, they take their vacations during the 4th of July time, but then they might be back in town closer to when school starts. So the reason we're looking at doing some changes is our enrollment went down. We had projected last year's budget at 2,100 students. And we had 1,662. I don't know why I remember that exactly. But the reason for, I'm taking more of a conservative approach, and we looked at it with our advisory council. And we're budgeting as if we would only have 1,662. Because if you notice, we actually had an ending fund balance. Now realize, I need another year to look at that because the budget's between two budget years. So we had a negative starting balance for the year that we're coming into. The budget sheet in your packet, and I'm not sure, I think it's on page, on 26, there is a change in that that I'd like to present to you. So since your board packet went out, if you look at the community ed chargeback, I'm proposing to reduce that to 4,690. And I think in your packet, it's 7,500. And that would bring us to a .25 positive fund balance. Now, this is just a projected budget. And what could happen is we could have more people enroll. But more than that, we want to manage the enrollment that we do get. So that what's happened in years past is when you have a session and you don't have enough kids, you usually would cancel that or try to put those students into another section where there's room. And last year was some transition that didn't always occur. And I'm pretty certain in all the years that I've been doing this, that that's why we experienced spending more than what we took in. And so I'm not, and I think others would agree, that I'm not in a position that we cancel this program yet. I'd like to have another year just to see how we can balance it out and continue to, we've taken a lot of it in-house and continue our marketing and see how it goes. And with that in mind, I'm not interested in raising the fees a lot. So if you look at the first page in your packet, I had explained how there's others that charge, you know, between $60, $75. And we'd like to do a modest increase of $3, which would bring it to $55. And I know that the budget's close, but I would like, I'm hoping that you would entertain that idea and let us give it a shot. We have made cuts in the budget as far as everywhere, every line item. Postage, printing, staffing, and so forth. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a couple, just kind of looking at the budget. So starting off with a $15,000 projected shortfall from last year. You've got $91,000 in fees, $3,000 in credit card. I'm not, how do we get to the total projected revenue of $72,000? Shouldn't that be closer?
She's taking the fund balance off of that.
Oh, she took the fund balance off of that?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
One question. You said you're gonna move the one session instead of having it over the 4th of July weekend? You're gonna move it. Is that gonna interfere with any other programs going on at the pool?
No, we check, you mean the facility use?
Yeah, yeah. Is that gonna affect other programs at the facility?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the swim budget as presented.
So moved.
By Rich. Second.
Second.
By Todd. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, second reading and final reading for policy 410, family and medical leave. And that's Mr. Mons.
Looks like he stepped out. I'll start and then he can enter right back in here. This is our family and medical leave policy. It has been updated with definitions that will include our military families and personnel that was missing from our previous, so we've changed that wording. So you can see quite a bit in the first two pages of this statement. And then under Section 3 on Statement of Policy, that has to do with active duty as well. That is also a change. And then if you go to page 30, this has, again, has to do with the development provisions to make and keep preserved records regarding our Fair Labor Standards Act. Again, making sure that we're in compliance with the state and moving that forward. And then under C, you can see family illness and bereavement leave. Mr. Mons, would you like to speak to that?
You bet. All right. We've taken the family illness and bereavement leave out of this policy. And that's because for all employees who have that benefit, it is outlined in their contract or their terms and conditions of employment. And so it's redundant to have it in this board policy. And additionally, it can be confusing because in some instances, the board policy contradicts the contract language.
Okay. Take a motion to approve the policy changes as a final reading?
I'll make the motion.
By Lee. Second.
Second.
By Tom. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Mike.
Matt, the inclusion of all of the military leaves and all that, have we had staff that have been called up that have served our?
We've had staff themselves who have been called up. But what this really speaks to is when you have a family member who's called up. And so that's what most of this language addresses. But yes, we do currently have staff members who have been called up, especially in the National Guard. And so, you know, we work with those individuals. And again, these aren't new rights or a new benefit for our employees.
Right. Okay.
Matt, were there any material changes or feedback since we had the first reading two weeks ago?
There have not.
Any other questions?
Yes. In striking this Section C, we're still in compliance with all federal guidelines and laws in regards to that?
Yes, we are correct. That's a district policy.
District policy.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Administrative report, Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just would like to reflect for a moment on our legislative session that's in process. Today, I contacted Representative Beard and Biskins regarding House File 88 that would repeal unfunded mandates for school districts and provide us more local control. I'll continue to monitor the session and close very closely and hope that all of you will do as well. It is through these bills that get put together in different committees and by different spokespersons that then get bundled into a comprehensive package at the end. So it's important to know all of the different pieces as they come through and to contact our legislators, whether it's Senator Claire Brobling, Representative Mark Biskins, or Representative Mike Beard. They are there to listen, and you can do that very easily through email as well as through phone calls. So I hope all of you will stay informed. This is going to be the funding for the next biennium for public education. So it's critical to us on how that looks as we go into the now $5 billion deficit that we hear, heard about yet today. Secondly, I wanted to just let you know that I'm serving on a scale. I've been asked by Scott County to sit on a scale committee called the Economic Development Strategy Group. And this group is working to, as a goal, to bring at least 50% of the residents in Scott County working south of the river. Right now, we have 68.7% of those that live in Scott County working outside of our county. So by 2030, this very diverse group of people are working to develop a plan that would help us have strategies in place for land use, for transportation, and for workforce. And as being one of the second-largest employer in our area, it's important that public education is represented there as a workforce. But also that public education is seen as one of those components that will bring people to our area and keep them in our area. So I'm the lone educator at the table, but I'm going to hopefully be presenting our reality to that group at our next meeting. So it's a short-term commitment. We'll be meeting until June and hopefully come up with strategies that we'll take back to the larger-scale organization at that time. One of the new things happening in our district is that junior achievement is coming to Bridges, our Alternative Learning Center. We've had that first meeting and the volunteers have already been signing up to work with our students at Bridges yet this spring. So I'm very excited about that happening. Last week, we hosted the Focus on the Future. 25 people gathered in this space last Tuesday night, I believe, or no, Wednesday night, to talk about what is it that we could be doing differently? Or we could enhance what we're doing currently to be a school district of choice by our residents and by community members that live outside of our area. And two themes came up. One was on the STEM, bringing an elementary focus of science, technology, engineering, and math to our students and into our schools, and also by providing an immersion opportunity for students beginning in kindergarten. So we're looking for volunteers to help us flush out what those options might look like and do further study on them. Certainly, we're not looking at anything for next year, but we are looking out beyond 2012, 13 on what kinds of opportunities could we offer our elementary schools, to our elementary schools for our residents in our community. Over the course of the last few weeks, I've been visiting all the schools. And I have to say, the energy that I get from being in the schools is just tremendous. I was in, with first graders today while they were going through their SMART activities and watching them get ready to learn and watching them bounce and roll and crawl and go through a pretend car wash so that their bodies were wired for learning as they went into their next session of reading. And finally, I'd just like to commend the Community Education Department. They put on the very first daddy-daughter dance on Saturday night and had over 300 people attend. Dads and daughters and big brothers and little sisters came for an evening of fun at our high school in the Commons area. And dads were on their knees dancing with their little girls that were either between the age of three and nine. There were treats and there were crafts and there was a DJ. And YMCA was one of the favorite songs of the night. So good things are happening, not only in our schools, but through our community education as we reach out to our community to meet the needs that they have. With the attendance that we had this time, I'm sure we'll have a second annual daddy-daughter dance coming up next year. And just one more reminder that on March 14th, there'll be another tour and talk at Edgewood, Early Childhood Center for Kindergarten. And, oh, this one's gonna be for Circle of Friends Preschool. And that will be happening, so at 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any other administrative reports? Okay, any board reports?
As Rich just leaned over, we were at the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting earlier this afternoon. A couple of things going on there. We're nearing the conclusion of mathematics and science doing their review. And they've been very feverishly reviewing numerous different text curricular options. And I believe in both those subject areas, elementary all the way through secondary, we've narrowed down to the two finalists. And so there's some further due diligence that the different committees are embarking upon. And Jeff had asked the committee for us to come back here in March. So we're gonna have a special meeting here to hear the recommendation from those subgroups to get the district curriculum committee's blessing, if you will, so that it can come to the board for a final review. I believe then in early April is the plan, right? We also then did look, I know the policy committee's been feverishly working on some policies to review and revise. So those came to the committee as well today, and we took a look at those and had some comments and feedback that I believe Jeff will then route back to the policy committee to look at. So I would expect to see those in the next month or so as well. Anything else, Rich, that I think I've got it right?
One thing that Jeff pointed out, that the way, the fine-tooth comb that they've gone through with these different curriculums, the suppliers of the curriculum said that this is the most intense and comprehensive, what do you want to call it? Grilling that they've ever had. I don't know if that's a good word. But they said that our district is being very diligent at picking out the correct curriculum for our students.
It has been, it's been a very, the committee has done a real diligent tool camp, diligent process of really going through all the curriculums that are out there. We have had multiple presentations by vendors, one as the initial. And from there, the committees have come up with different questions, deeper questions, taking a chance to look at all the materials, asking the ones to come back for another level of scrutiny or also another level of review. And the process has been, all of the vendors and the representatives have come to me saying that they've appreciated the process, they've appreciated coming. that they've, they've appreciated the process, they appreciate coming to work with our committees to present their materials to this Paralegal Sabbath, and as Tom pointed out, they are impressed with the amount of homework, research, diligence that all the committee members are putting into this decision. So, I do want to commend the committee for that, because there is a lot of hard work when it comes down to evaluating and reviewing curriculum.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Dan.
Well, for student council, I guess I should report stuff since I missed last, last week. We just wrapped up our snow week, which was a very successful week with a great dance, and then during the week, we had a dodgeball tournament, and it was very interesting to see, I think every year, it becomes one of the more popular events throughout the year, and we saw a lot of kids participate in it, and then also, a lot of students, as I observed it, were calling their parents and letting them know that they didn't need a ride home right away because they were going to stay and watch the dodgeball tournament. So, there was a lot of people participating but also observing along the track. And then, we're now moving forth into our spring events, which are the talent show, Laker Olympics, and now, which I already lost my mind. Can't think of it now, but there, we have three events going on, so we're looking, we're moving on to those. And then, a final note, our very own Jordan Wires was elected Vice President of our Capital Division, so I'm not sure if that means that he has a higher power over me now, but it's a division that is 15, or not 15, but a little over 10 schools around the area, and he was elected, and the, there was a preliminary vote, and it was a tie, and then the second vote, again, that we did, he ended up winning, so it was very, it was very intense, but we were all very happy for him, and it was a great, great election for him, so.
Any others? I'll just talk very quickly. Certified committee met, we're finished, trying to finish up the principal's contract. We also met to discuss the process for the superintendent evaluation, and we hope to bring a proposal and timeline to the board for review so that we can start that process. As a board, she's the only employee that we directly evaluate, and, and that's one of our primary functions, and so it's important that we start that process now because, quite honestly, time is flying by really, really fast. And then, second, you know, we heard the report from the, from the Building Committee and our consultants, just a reminder that the committee's going to be meeting on Thursday. We have a workshop on the 7th and then the public forum on the evening of the 7th, so hopefully all board members can be in attendance. Any other committee updates? Future events? I have them here somewhere. A moment. Okay. End of the trimester is, the trimester is this Friday. No school on the 7th. Board study session, as I just mentioned, on the 7th and with the open forum. Our trimester kicks off on Tuesday, the 8th. Parent-teacher conference is on the 10th. We have a board meeting on the 14th, and many of you got a saved date for our partnership celebration on April 7th. It's a great event, so I encourage everyone to attend if they can. Anything else coming before the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Rich, second by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries six zero, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.